They'll give us the information. We can, I think essentially a phone call or some keystrokes, we can adjust the rate.
You can do it right.
And they can tell us how much has been used and when. So it is an online platform.
Maybe we gotta drop it or nothing, get people going.
I'll get back in there and drop it some more, because I bumped it up just a little bit, but I'll drop it down. And then we do need to do some better signage.
Well, they gotta use our credit card, is it our minimum fee or something they're gonna get paid with or something?
It's a through an app on your smartphone.
Yeah.
You have to have a phone capable of using it, so.
And we're on a map, we're on a national map now to charging stations.
I'm all for it, I just wanna make it more.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
You want to sign by eighty-one?
Yeah. I, we couldn't do it, we'd have to do it. We could do it at the bottom, well, we'll figure it out, because we do need to do the new signage, we'll talk about all that. Yeah, we'll. But then we, then we did do the rest of the, we missed, we were just a little bit late on the big grant, but Craig went through the Green Coach training. I believe we're gonna get another five thousand dollar grant.
Wow.
From that. The next step of all of this is to become a climate smart community, which just involves a little more paperwork for Dan.
He loves it.
Tracking, tracking some of the things that we're doing. But it is a, it's a good thing for the village, I mean, it's a, you know, it makes us stand out, really.
I'm all for it, yeah.
So really, we've got the motion here, the resolution, I would probably just like to have a motion to have it accepted as written.
I'll second, but I wanna add in under the discussion, just whether or not, we have some residents that don't believe in climate change, we have others that do. Whether you believe in climate change or not, these items here that are in this resolution are all just good business practices for the village. So no matter where you stand on this issue, this is still a smart thing for us to do in order to move forward as a community.
If our business climate keeps environment, I'm all for it.
Yep. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay. All right, the next one is, we need to, that was a good, thank you for the explanation, Dan. We need to pass this resolution for Dazni, to make them happy that we're not just kidding around about this fire truck, but we're serious. So this is the breakout, and it basically at the end just says that we have committed to a certain amount of money already, but that we will commit to the final two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to purchase the truck. So if I can get a motion to accept it.
I would like to just, you know, I know you've got it written down, I almost think we oughta read this out, just so people know how the breakdown is coming. I mean, either they can come in and read it.
Well, we can, yeah, we can do it, the only thing, uh, steal Senator Silver's thunder a little bit, but I guess we can do that.
Oh, yeah, I don't wanna steal that.
I usually think like to.
The amount's not given, just that the grant is coming from the fund Dazny, the amount was given.
Yeah.
You, wait, are reading?
I, I think, yeah, we'll leave it alone, just know the fact that.
Come in and read it.
But I would say, once we get this done, Dazny should be ready to move forward quickly, and then, once, once that's done, he can come and have his press conference with us.
Yeah.
I'll tell you guys this time.
We can do it, we're replacing five oh two, right?
I think so.
So we can, we can roll five oh two out.
Five oh three, it's the older one, one.
I don't know, we'll have to go back to check.
Five oh two.
Five oh two, right, that would be the older one, five oh three is the newer one that just got refixed. Should be good for a modern.
I'll make a motion that the resolution for the commitment of money is dedicated to the purchase of a fire truck as written. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Dante, you have any thoughts?
So you guys got the law about fireplace, so I wrote it on this one. Against that, for the regulation, uh, procedure, you just gotta get it declared. The tobacco law, some questions about how you guys wanna approach that.
Hit us.
So as far as the licenses go, we want to have the authority to issue licenses to sell tobacco in the village.
Do we have to have that, or is that just something that?
Well, are zoning, the kind of the two forms you could take of a license model, the zoning model, the zoning models aren't particularly well developed, like this, it's not really that complex. We have present business district, a couple of other businesses, you tell districts.
Our licenses granted by the board and administered by our court. Like if you were a vendor or something.
That's how it would be for vendors and peddlers and that sort of.
We might as well do that one, right?
We are kinda creating this whole regulatory structure.
This is gonna be pretty serious stuff, so I think the serious stuff oughta be answered right here around this table, well, not this table necessarily, but the board should be involved in this.
Yeah.
Is there maybe some interesting conflicts? If somebody really gets their backup? I don't think there will be, but if there was, I think it has to be solved here and not put into.
Oh yeah, no, the board has to make the decision, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, not putting it onto the staff, which is burdened enough. So what are you looking for down there?
Who's gonna issue the licenses, how much does a license cost, who's gonna be inspecting, what criteria and frequency are required inspections? We're planning on grandfathering in establishments already.
Yeah, and then issuing no further licenses.
But we still need to set up some sort of mechanism where people can get licenses, just to provide the process requirements. The other route you could take is we could try to prevent the total sales of tobacco from being launched, but that would, you know, be a business and stop the children, so it's a bit.
Yeah, we don't wanna stop, we don't wanna stop the people that are already doing it, we just wanna stop the businesses from coming in.
Then we need a procedure that's neutral, that everybody, you know, like those are like, we're forced that.
Okay.
I was having trouble coming up with it, we are kind of a smallish village to have this kind of thing, it's.
Their attorney didn't have a suggestion.
Well, other villages have more positions available, solicitor, court offices, we don't want to.
All right, let's go through your questions one at a time.
Yep, so the board.
I'll give you a shot at it, it's my best.
The board, through clerk, kind of the same model we have for solicitors. For the issuance of license. A cost for one, a hundred dollars, maybe fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars.
What are the criteria? To license to sell tobacco in the village?
You gotta have a, an I number, you have to be, be able to collect taxes, state sales tax. You gotta be licensed, if there is any requirement, to be a retail, I don't know what the retail requirements are, like from New York State or the county.
Yeah.
And that, and then.
Doing a business S, a BBA, maybe?
In this language, can we also put a restriction on proximity to schools?
See, that would be more in the zoning model.
More in the zoning.
Which is another tactic we could take, but it seems like we have tobacco in our, they, Business Two and then the Central Business District. So we could put this backup thing for both of those, I guess, as a zoning restriction, it's a kind of a total model.
So we don't really, stashers can't have a cigarette machine without a license.
Yeah.
An application for us.
To the village, to the state, yeah.
All right, so what was the question?
Criteria for the issuance of licenses to sell.
They have to have a establishment with rent, or an agreement to operate on a premises within the village limits. In order to get a have a rent agreement, or something from a landlord, or you own the building, and it's gotta be zoned as a retail establishment, can't be out of your home.
There's also something we could do with an application that they would have to submit, but we can, we can put in a mechanism.
It could be very similar to what you gotta do for a liquor license, they give you all kinds of.
Yeah, I've done a few of those.
They're in state or federal regulations?
Yeah, there are a ton of state and federal regulations, that's mostly where tobacco is regulated.
Couldn't we just, couldn't we just steal the language from a liquor license?
Yeah, that's.
Well, not, not to that level, I mean, not to that extent, but.
The liquor license is like fifty papers on.
Is there a resume or something? We'll push this to a work, we can, I don't know if we can get to this time.
Yeah, probably, but we can push it to a work session.
I just ran into all these kind of issues, I didn't wanna just make sense of what you guys got. If you, if you email us those things.
Yeah, questions.
And then we can start formulating, I just don't want us to do a half.
Yep.
Fake.
Just for a moment, yeah.
What are there, three places in the village, two gas stations?
There's three, and a lot of heat, just the three, that's the whole thing.
Yeah.
Excellent.
You wanna talk about the environmental stuff, we're over today and now.
I think that's probably executive session, anything else? All right, so then we need to go into, oh, comments by board members.
Okay. Just because of, I attended the town meeting, some of the things they were talking about. They're taking more measurements for the town hall here, they're not ready to go out to bid yet, but they're moving on that. The Wall Street Bridge Grant, the final version was submitted last Friday, the twenty-seventh of April, so that's out there. The Wall Street Bridge was red-tagged, which meant that the state came through and inspected and said that it's probably gonna fail before its next inspection.
Keep going, he's already briefed.
I already briefed him.
One second.
But they're looking at BNL to see what they can do. Town did thank the village for helping out with providing some feedback for their, their grant on the, on the bridge. I wish, I'll get with Tim, because the town is also looking at the LED lighting. Memorial Day Parade is coming up. We already voted Mike Parkin for the Workman's Comp representative. Kevin, they're looking at quotes for the handicap accessible doors in the back, they're still getting a couple more on those. Tompkins Health Consortium, which we're a member of, they're looking at a four percent increase for the next five years, so as we heard there, they're looking at seven to eight. Well, the consortium that we're a part of is looking at four, so that's, that's a good deal for our residents and us. That, and from the legislature, that they, they purchased that compactor for the dump to the tune of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
What, for a compactor?
The, yep. One of those big machines that kinda crunches everything down.
Right.
Yep, so.
I'm surprised they've come to such a recent rate, and that been for thirty, that's just crazy.
So that was the down and dirty of it on that. Is anybody gonna be around for Memorial Day?
Yeah.
You have to be determined.
You have to be determined, okay.
Or be at camp.
I hope they have a parade, I'd like to.
Well, there's gonna be a parade, we just haven't gotten to it.
I'd like to, like to be in it, I'd like to go, I hope Martin speaks again at the cemetery, I thought that was great.
You know, they got a different.
Different speaker?
Different speaker.
Sure, that'll be excellent, too.
Well, it's nice that they change it up every year.
Yeah.
Just wish Martin had better weather last year, but. So if, that was the only thing I had, other than that, I think we're ready to go to executive session.
You guys have any? No. All right, so we gotta go to the executive session to discuss real estate and personnel?
I'll make the motion to move into the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the animals.
I've got two cameras to go here.
Go, go.
Good, because I gotta use the, the trim, so.
Why'd you, why'd you go with two cameras and Facebook, not YouTube today?
So, I didn't get an interruption once on Facebook stream today.
But you always get them on YouTube?
Every single time, I'll get three or five.
Can you transfer the Facebook feed over to YouTube?
I'm not, I'm gonna find out right now if that will.
It'll be recorded. Shining faces. All right. First up, we've got the Seeker Two resolutions and the Sewer Bond resolutions.
So, thanks for having me back again. This isn't the most exciting part of the project, so I'll try to be brief with it. If you remember, the last time I was here, we did the Part One of the Seeker for the sewer project, the Part One said the village is gonna be lead agent, and you send it out to all the involved interested parties, which is DEC, DOT, anyone that would give you a permit, anyone that would wanna comment on the sewer project. Dan, I don't believe you've got any response back, so we gave you the thirty days, they have the ability to respond, and now, at the end of that cycle, what we do is we do what's called a Part Two that's in front of you, so the Part Two has a bunch of questions on it, it looks like this. The, that one right there. And what I'm required to do is walk through these eighteen questions. We pre-fill it out for you, so we do a lot of the light work, but since this is your lead agent and you are being asked to do a negative impact declaration when we're done with this, we're gonna walk through these eighteen questions. If you don't have any objections to our selection, remain silent, if I hear none, we'll move on to the next one. If you got questions as to why we said yes or we said no, speak up, we can talk about it, this can be amended today as we talk, and then the final amended version, I could just fix it tomorrow, and when we send this out to the DEC, I'll send an amended version, so we can still do the resolution, even if there's something we wanna change. And I guess before I start, I'll say that there's a Part Three that we also handed out. What we use this Part Three for is if there are any yeses to the impact questions on each category, we talk about them in Part Three. And the reason we do that is, are you familiar with Article Seventy-two? Or, so if someone wants to challenge a capital improvement project, or really any action taken by a board, they file was called an Article Seventy-two, and that is basically saying that you did not do your due diligence in the seeker process. Attorney may have a little more explanation for that, but that's, if we've gotten stuck on any project at any time, it's usually because some grassroots or some environmental group is challenging that we didn't, you know, take care of some action or identify some action. So Part Three is really just justification of every little aspect that we said yes to. So if we change anything, we'll probably change it in Part Three as well. We do not need to go through this right now unless you have a question as to why, why there was a yes, so. Without that, there's no questions, I'll start. So the first one is the impact on land. So the question says, proposed action may involve construction on physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. Obviously, we're digging in sewers and we're doing trenchless technology, so these are all yeses. They have to do with water table, excavation and removal of a certain quantity, so we just say yes to it. We do say, though, that it's a no, no impact, a small impact, generally when we say yes, it's, it's gonna be a small impact. Again, speak up if you need to. Number two, on the second page, is impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in modification or destruction of any unique, unusual landforms on this site. We say no, these are landforms that would be designated on a GIS layer by the state, saying they are unique, specific landforms, and in this location, there are none. So that's an easy one. Impact on surface water, the proposed action may affect one or, or more wetlands or other surface water bodies, that's no, we're not, we're not doing anything with streams or, or water bodies. So that's an easy one.
I do have a question, do we do anything underneath the Tiaf Nioga?
Yep. Underneath, we're still not touching. If we were, if we were gonna trench through it, it would be a temporary, temporary impact, we would say yes, because there would be a small. But if we do anything directional drill or any of that, then we would, we would say.
It's not an effect. Got it, thank you.
Impact, card. Number four, impact on groundwater, the proposed action may result in new or additional use of water, or may have a potential to introduce contaminants to groundwater or aquifer, no, we're actually removing groundwater from our sewer system, so it hasn't, you know, we're having a reverse effect. Impact on flooding, the proposed action may result in developments on land subject to flooding, yes, that's because we are in a flood bank in certain areas, so we say yes to that. Also, we are taking water out of the sewer system that would normally go from a street or yard and soak into the sewer system, so there does have a potential to have, you know, the other effect that you take it out, it's gotta go somewhere, so it becomes more stormwater issue, I think. Again, no or small impact. Impact on air, no, you know, we're not doing any, anything that has to do with emissions. Impact on plants or animals, we say yes, this is because we are doing construction, and with DEC permit, we do have to do a query for what, what animals, insects are endangered, you know, bats is usually the one that triggers this one. If we had to do any clearing, there is, there is the, you may have run into that in other projects at that point, so we always say yes to that. So we will have to take that into consideration when we do any removal. Impact on agricultural resources, no, we're not in an ag district. At least with the sewer. Impact on aesthetic resources, the land use of the proposed action are obviously different from, or in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project. This is always one I like to go to Part Three on, just because that's kind of like, I'll just read it for you, you don't have to really look through it. So in case you wonder, you actually go to, the number that we were reading is nine, so you would go to nine, which is on page five, yep. And I'll read that for you. The situation or activity in which viewers are engaged while viewing the proposed action, it actually says, item two is recreational tourism based. Construction activities will occur along village roadways, which are traveled on a routine basis by residents to and from work, as well as individuals visiting the area, construction activities will be temporary. These are aesthetic resources within five miles of the village, but construction activities are unlikely to be visible from any of these resources. So again, temporary, but there is an. Number ten, impact on historic and ar- archaeological resources, we said yes, there are historic areas within the village. So that's usually with that, you know, that if you looked at a map, which we will have in, in the whole submission, there is ag or archaeological resources there. Eleven, impact on open space and recreation, the answer, there's no. The question would be, the proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or reduced open space. We're not taking away anything, we're all sub, subsurface, so even if we were going through a recreational area, it would all be underground. Twelve, impact on critical environmental areas, that's a yes, again, that's why I like to, and I think it's read through. The northwestern corner of the village is partially within the Homer Public Water Supply Source Critical Environmental Area. Work proposed within the map CEA, which is a critical environmental area, generally involves manhole irrigation and will involve little or no ground disturbance, no permanent interest in bags, so again, temporary, but it does exist. Thirteen, impact on transportation?
Yes.
Then it's temporary, but there's gonna be some road closures, there's gonna be some lane closures, depending on where they're doing the work in the middle of the road, where the sewer manholes are, so I'm sure Buzz is used to that. So that's a yes. Impact on energy, that's a no, it would be, proposed action may cause or increase the use of any, any form of energy. We're not doing any type of mechanical upgrades, so that's a no. Impact on noise, order light, that's a yes, that just has to do with construction activities, but they'll all be temporary. Sixteen, impact on human health, that's a yes, we are dealing with sewer here, so that's quite obvious that we're dealing, we're trying to make it better, but still, we're dealing with the sewer, so that, that is a little ongoing impact. Actually, the only one, we did have a moderate to large, and that's because it's within fifteen hundred feet of a school, hospital, or nursing home, so probably the school is high, I guess. Seventeen, consistent with the community plans, this is a no, and the reason it's a no is if you read the sentence, it says, the proposed action is not consistent with adopting land use plans. So it's kind of a play on words there, but that's why it's a no, it really is consistent with your plan, but. And the same one with eighteen, consistent with community character, it's a no, and the reason is because it's inconsistent with the existing community characters, the way that reads. Why the state does it that way, I have no idea, but that, that closes Part Two, so. I'll take comments on any of them, hearing none, we'll move on to the resolution. So Part Three, again, you don't need to, we don't need to go through, just if we have questions. And then the resolution. You want me to read it, or do we just wanna have the board read it, assuming they already have, and make a resolution?
And should it be read and directed?
It could be read and directed, yeah.
I have no problem reading it, you wanna read it?
I don't wanna read it, my voice is not the greatest tonight.
Okay, you want me to read it? Thank you. The proposed action Village of Homer Sewer System Improvement Project Resolution determining that the proposed Village of Homer Sewer System Improvement Project is a Type One action, it will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Whereas the Village of Homer is proposing the Village of Homer Sewer System Improvement Project located in the Village of Homer, Portland, New York, and whereas the project has been classified as a Type One action, as defined by the State Environmental Quality Review Act, Seeker in S or Six, New York CRR, Part Six, Seventeen Point Four, and, whereas the Village of Homer Board, Village Board sent a letter and Part One of full environmental assessment form to other potential interested agencies and involved agencies, as these terms are defined in the Seeker Regulations found in Six NYCRR, Part Six, Seventeen Point Two, indicating the village's desire to serve as a lead agency as the quoted term is defined in the Seeker Regulations, and the completed, the complete coordination of review of the project in accordance with Six, New York CRR, Part Six, Seventeen Point Six. And whereas, response from the interested involved agencies were requested, and each of the potential interested involved agencies has agreed to or raised no objection to the Village of Homer Village Board serving as lead agency for the project. And whereas, pursuant to the Seeker Regulations, the Village of Homer Board has consistent, is considered to significance of the potential environmental impacts of the project by using the criteria specified in Section Six, Seventeen Point Seven of the Seeker Regulations, and examining the full environmental assessment form for the project, including the facts and conclusions in Parts One, Two, and Three of the full environmental assessment form, together with other available supporting information, to identify the relevant areas of environmental concern. Now therefore, be resolved that the Village of Homer Village Board hereby establishes itself as lead agency for the project, and be it further resolved that based upon the examination of the full environmental assessment form and other available supporting information, considering both the magnitude and importance of each relevant area of environmental concern, and based further upon the village's knowledge of the areas surrounding the project, the Village of Homer Village Board makes the determination that the project will not have a significant adverse environmental impact, and that the project will not require the preparation of a draft environmental impact statement, which should be a much more detailed investigation into certain specific aspects. Be it further resolved that in sequence of such findings and declarations, and in compliance with the requirements of Seeker, the Village of Homer Village Board as lead agency hereby directs the Village of Homer Mayor to sign the full environmental assessment form, Part Three, determination of significance indicating that negative declaration has been issued for the project, this resolution shall take effect immediately. The question of the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly put to a vote, and upon a roll call, the vote was as follows. So I think this is where you make the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
We wanna know this.
All favor?
Aye.
Uh, the next one is really long. Are we allowed, are we allowed to just submit it into the record as written?
We can submit it as written, we can read the top portion if you'd like.
Let's read the top portion, and then submit the rest as written.
Bond resolution dated May ninth, twenty eighteen. Resolution authorizing subject progressive referendum, construction of improvements to and construction of the sanitary sewer system in and for the Village of Homer, Portland County, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one point seven, seven hundred and thirty thousand, and authorizing the issuance of matric seed of one point seven three zero serial bonds of said village to pay the cost thereof. Whereas the capital project herein after described has been determined to be a type one action pursuant to the regulations of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, promulgated pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the implementation of which has been proposed. It has been determined will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, and whereas it is now desired to authorize the financing of such capital project, now therefore be it resolved. And by the affirmative vote of not less than two thirds of the total voting strength of the board trustees, the Village of Homer, Portland County, New York.
I can just the rest of it put in.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
I guess the discussion part is, we may need, may not need all of that, but that's the number to, if it...
Based on funding.
Yeah, based on funding.
Yeah.
Did you guys sort out anything in the call?
So we did. Um, Dan was on the call, uh, we had disciplisers on the call, and, um, we determined there are three paths that are potentially at, at reduced. The first one, uh, which I'll start at the best case scenario, would be, um, using, uh, clean water, uh, state revolving fund money, that's the C W S R F. That's through environmental facilities preparation, that's a zero percent interest loan for thirty years. That's essentially like getting a forty percent grant on your project. Yeah, that's the one that we're, we're right there at the list with the numbers, we're, we're like four or five points below. Next year, that list will probably go down, so that number all of a sudden goes below Homer, and now you're above what they call the funding line. So that's where we're, that's what, that's what we're hoping on. In addition to that, there's also grant money we can apply for, because we are below certain economic characteristics. So by, by adding grant to that number, all of a sudden that lowers the cost. So what the board generally wants to agree on is that, okay, that number and those costs per, per user, we're okay with those as is, but we wanna get them lower.
Right.
So we move forward knowing that we're okay here, but the, the goal is to keep going after more funding, more funding that brings that down from thirty dollars to twenty dollars, you know? We want that to go as low as we possibly can get.
Reason I ask is I didn't want the public to freak out that we're gonna go out and get all that. Chances are it'll be significantly less, if it's necessary, because...
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
Oh, perfect, I can run through that.
So, yeah, so obviously, uh, market rate.
Right.
Not really interested in that.
Nope, not at all.
No.
So you have, just for the public's note, we have, so number four is the one I, I, I recommended. It's actually twenty-five percent we grant, not twenty-four percent.
Okay.
So that's as low as thirty dollars. And then you go up to E F C hardship rate, that would probably be as high as you would go. Because if you don't get hardship, you're just gonna take the next best, and that's gonna be thirty-nine dollars. So the swing there.
Right.
And then annual user cost of ten dollars, I mean, that's, it's unfortunate if you don't get it, but, you know, we'll try everything.
So that's our, pretty much our worst case scenario.
That's worst case scenario. We just did the other ones, because we wanted to see, if we went rural development, we have, we definitely can now. Um, but that brings it up to forty-seven dollars, that's quite a jump from thirty.
Yeah.
So, um, RD property rate, although it's a good program, it's not as sweet as the E F C program. So if anyone that can get E F C, that qualifies, you're gonna take that every day.
And we did, of course, we did qualify for that, right?
We did qualify for that as well, so if we wanted to, for some reason, I don't know what it would be.
Steak dinner?
Yeah.
Yes, he will. I want...
Square. So because of the income study, um, they went around and canvassed the village, and we got below that number, so now we can take their money if we wanted. We also can apply for what's called, uh, community development block grants, which is another category that we applied for.
Right.
So, so both of those are fantastic.
Yep.
You can not only use that in this project, but you can use that in any project you do go forward, which is fantastic. Congratulations on that.
Excellent.
And then, I guess in terms of what, what goes from here, um, we have to let this bond resolution sit for thirty days.
Right.
And after thirty days, just like the SEER, you make another determination that closes that, solidifies that bond resolution, and then you do what's called a stopover notice, and that just says one last time, hey, we're gonna tell everyone, we told you, and that sits for twenty days. So I'll be back in a month or two, and at that point, we could talk about, you know, how, how timeline, schedule, how we wanna start moving forward with things this year. Just so you know, as far as the schedule, it would be designed this year into the winter, and we wanna kind of bet it, well, the contractors, we're hungry in the winter.
Right.
To get ready for two thousand nineteen. So I think that's, that's the plan.
Perfect.
One thing I would ask that we do is form a sewer committee.
Okay.
It would be usually the mayor, yourself, and Buzz, and then your, I usually ask that one other board member sit on that as well.
Okay.
And then any other departments that we think should be involved. You know, Dan could be involved from, from the financial side of things, um, and myself, obviously. So what that does is we'll meet regularly, um, and then you as the committee, you don't need me to come in all meetings, you can just give updates, and we can make general decisions to guide the project, but anytime there's something that has to be done, we'll obviously wanna come back to the board.
Got it.
So...
Which one do you find that one wants to volunteer in and serve?
I think Tim does.
Yeah, Tim.
Tim? All right. Tim's on the committee, I think.
Volunteered for him, I like that.
He's not here.
I know, that's why.
All right, so we need a...
I'll make that.
I'll make that.
I'll second.
Oh, I think we probably already did that, but now we're at, uh, discussion, we're at, oh, yeah. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any comments? Great.
So I have one thing, and we talked about you signing, um, the part three, if you don't mind doing that right now.
Right.
I even asked where I need your signature.
Fantastic.
And then we'll send that to the D E C, uh, we'll file what's called the environmental lose bulletin. That actually gets posted on the D C's website, so if anyone says, hey, did you do this? D E C actually says, yep, you guys closed your process, so.
All right.
With that, I'm going to another board meeting.
Have fun with that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You too.
All right. Next item is two of food groups from last meeting. Good job again, Dan.
I ran it home, I thought you were great.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Treasure report.
So you have summaries of general fund revenues and expenditures in last year. Short summary is, uh, for expenditures, we spend less, for revenues, we made more.
True.
And then, uh, behind that is the trial balance of this year's tax collection. We sold out just, uh, just over a hundred thousand. Quite a good portion of taxes so far.
All right, I do like this, uh, spending less than planned and earning more than planned stuff.
We'll keep it up for this this week. So that's one fifty-eight.
I don't, you stop it. Give me your math. Where are we at now, two and a half, two and a half million dollars?
I'll talk to you at the, at the...
At the steak dinner?
At the steak dinner.
We will have that, we will have that real number soon.
We will have a discussion.
No, but we will have that real number soon.
Well, I know.
For sure.
It's looking really good.
I'm excited.
I am too.
Are you?
We can do some really good things with this.
Good, I agree with you.
All right, I'm pretty excited, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thanks for putting us together.
That's a key, you've got most help.
So are we ready to authorize the payment bills?
We are ready to authorize the payment of the bills. I went through and signed them, they looked horrendous as usual, breaking out all those telephone charges and utility charges, but the job is done. Although we were, the, uh, cost or the debt service on the, or boat. It ain't cheap. No, not cheap. But, uh, part of what we're gonna do with this sewer project is put in some meters, some sewer meters along the Portlandville section.
No, no.
Start charging what they're really using. Okay. And I wanna make a motion to, uh, pay the bills?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Discussion? All favor?
Aye.
All right, yes. All right. We're onto the reports, in our fancy new format.
I like it. I like it.
All right, we'll start with, uh, codes.
Where have you been?
What do you mean?
You're pretty bright red.
Oh.
Aruba?
You were late.
So I'll sleep on your boat?
Yeah, it was just a long trip from the Morris down to Portland, Oregon.
Was painful.
Not yet, though, will be.
So I see we have a, a court date for that one violation.
Okay.
Do you see it now, Dan?
No, do we have a court date?
Yes, we do.
Which one is this?
Uh, Copland. What's the date? Fifteenth. Tuesday, the fifteenth of May. Sixteen hundred. I'm sorry, four o'clock.
Very good. Anything else to add, Craig?
Uh, no, but as long as you're doing the codes thing, um, I've got a question, uh, I, I don't know if you guys have addressed it, you heard a lot of complaints about the garbage, doing garbage, some kind of a local law to address the situation of cans being out.
Yeah, we're gonna, that's on the agenda for tonight, we're gonna, uh, modify, right, we're gonna modify our existing...
Yeah, so the, um, the garbage regulation, uh, village ordinance allows the village board and trustees to promulgate regulations regarding trash management, which is a regulation, which has to be properly noticed and then possibly consistent with the first office.
Notice before we vote on it, or after we vote?
After. It won't take an effect until it's moved.
Those... Got it, okay, yeah. Thoughts on that?
Uh, no, that's, you know, that's good, but if I see further on down, I might as well take care of while I'm here, the vacant housing program. Pat and I have been going around taking a look at some of these properties, so we're gonna move forward with what we've got here.
So I gave the trustees and the mayor a copy of the buildings that were considered vacant, and, uh, as of nine, well, as of four May, when, uh, Greg went through, and, uh, we reduced the list. The date, these buildings may have been vacant for a long time prior, but we had to establish a start date, because that's where everything takes effect from. So the next step is for the office has to send out letters to the owners, notifying them that their building has been identified, and that they need to, uh, I think we should send a copy of the law or a streamlined version thereof, letting them know what they have to do.
And in some cases, it'll be the property, probably be the property maintenance company. We've got a lot of phone numbers and names of companies, stickers they put on the houses for people to get in touch with.
Can you put that on your list and delegate, if you need to delegate, is it someone else to do? Start sending those letters? Thank you.
That's a great job, by the way.
Yeah, it was a good, thank you for doing this.
We've been watching to that for a long time.
Anything else, everything else is just little things here and there. I guess, uh, the Opera House went out for, I think it's going out for bid, because that's, I got, uh, prints for that, plans for that. At some point, if somebody has it, I need to get a, a contact phone number for one of the owners.
For Renee?
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah. At some point, I'll pick, you know, just leave it and put it with Kristen or something, I'll get that.
Okay.
Drawn a plank, trying to get in touch with them, and they have, there's some stuff they have to get, get going on.
All right, put it on the list. Excellent. Any other question or special code?
I had a couple complaints about vehicles being, uh, parked in between the sidewalk and the road for sale. And that's supposed to have them there, or is it, they can be backed on the lawn, their own lawn?
Yeah, and I didn't have a chance, I, we just spoke about that, for me, I didn't have a chance to look up the exact time. But there's only a certain amount of days you can do that, and it's only like once a year, or twice a year max. I think, I think it's once a year you can do that, and after that certain amount of days, three or six, ten, I don't know, I'll have to look it up, I don't know, which I might do, but, uh, after that. Because they can't park out in the front anyway, because between the sidewalk and the street is, uh, the village property, it's, it's public right away, so they can't park, not supposed to park anything there. So, uh, if you own a car and you want it for sale, you can have it on your lawn for a couple days, but it has to be towards the house.
And then the second thing is just, uh, I know the weather's getting nice, and everybody wants to be outside, but the village lamp posts are, are not one end for a hammock.
Sorry, what, hammock on?
Yes. So it's a good thing Mike Carter's not here right now, he'd probably have kittens about that.
That's a disaster waiting to happen. Any other discussion on codes?
So we picked up Bob's barbecue sign up in the corner.
What do we do about that?
Bring it up to Bob and talk to him about it.
You can't make exceptions.
No, I'm saying we gotta pick it up. Last time we brought him up to him and said, hey, no more, you gotta get a permit, you gotta have it, it's not right.
Yeah.
Maybe, is that something that could just be confiscated, and it's already got the word?
There, there's a whole stash of them at D P W that we picked up. So anytime anybody sees a sign in the village, you're allowed to pick it off. We, it's not allowed, so. Take them, bring them over to D P W, and just put them in there. We'll start calling people in Syracuse, you know, that kind of stuff. See their phone numbers on three point five. If nobody picks it up, I'll pick it up tomorrow.
I make a motion to accept the, uh, April codes reports.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you guys finished with your...
Yeah, thank you.
ALO.
All right, dogs.
Pat, tomorrow night? Is that tomorrow night?
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow. Another exciting episode of Code Book Revision.
See you, guys.
See you.
Pretty simple.
Pretty simple.
Make a motion to accept it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Streets and parks. I don't see Mr. Carter even here, do we?
I saw him today, he was driving around making sure trees were kind of wet. Wanted to tell everybody to water their tree if they, uh, wanna keep it alive. They're gonna try to water a lot of them, but...
We planted twenty-four, uh, thirtieth, eight more are getting planted, probably this week sometimes. I saw him out there, I saw the, the safe day flags up, so.
That's the kind of a month last fall.
Yeah, yeah, we planted a lot of trees. It's determining cuttings ongoing. We had to take down several large trees that were in really bad shape, it's a priority, but I saw... We had to take down several large trees that were in really bad shape, it's a priority, but I saw, uh, they were cutting trees even this weekend. Uh, the two hour parking signs are up in front of the library.
Seem to be working, too.
Yeah. The flowers and, the flowers and the hanging baskets are going out. Uh, so this, I don't know if you guys caught when you were signing the bills, there's a whole thing kind of that went with the beautification committee, but a lot of the flower boxes were falling apart. They, you know, the boards rotted out and everything. And we sort of made a, a deal with Arnold's Florist that they would fix all the boxes for us, which was no small affair with the pressure treated lumber and the paint and the repairs, as long as we allowed them to do the flowers for the village for the next three years. Thought that was pretty good trade off.
We were probably handing out.
We were probably gonna hand it away, you know, support a local business, so, so that's in there, so that was, that was nice of them to do that, because it would have been quite a bit of money for a pair of those. Yeah. Uh, street sweeping's gonna start, it does go early in the morning on Main Street because there's no cars there, so that's the only time they can get to it. We, uh, we did go with the cheap picnic tables, the hundred dollar pressure treated ones, so six hundred dollars instead of, I don't know, what those tracks ones were.
Thousands.
Yeah. We did put up a new table at the community gardens, which they painted. Doing the fields ready, all the string cleanups happening, Amnesty Day is Saturday, the twelfth.
Alright.
That's it.
I make a motion to accept the report, all second.
All favor?
Aye.
Yes. Alright, farmer's market report. Yeah, we got some new ones in here this time, guys.
Yes.
I asked for some new reports for some new data. So, uh, we got a couple signed up, we're gonna get probably a few more signed up. You can get, you can see a list of the, of the products we expect to have in the market. This is gonna be one of those things, it's gonna have, it's gonna take time to build up momentum again.
Yeah, I like the massage therapy.
Massage therapy will be there, the, uh.
Right, don't they?
Alright, good.
Anything to draw more to try out?
Well, I'll probably have a line for that one.
The, um, market starts on the twelfth, so probably expect a lot of, uh, plant starts and things like that, honey. Things like that, that'll be good.
This Saturday?
This Saturday, yeah.
Alright, so this Saturday, come on out.
There's an apiary that's gonna be there, so that's good. Get your local honey, very important, good for you.
Good for allergies.
Yeah. And then we've got, uh, Dave's Veggies will be back, and then a new, brand new farm, Blue Owl Farms, so they'll have produce and gyms and all this.
Where do they work?
I don't know, we'll have to look, they're new, and then I, I haven't heard from Debbie and Scott and Badminton, but I suspect they'll be there.
How about Edgewood?
Edgewood will probably be there, too, yeah, they, um, they're, they're going to the regional market in Syracuse, but. Alright.
Just a reminder that the, uh, when the concert series starts, that that'll run right up before it.
That'd be very nice.
Yeah.
More people show up. It's not a report we have to vote on.
Nope.
Okay.
Alright, fire report here. All the instances, very busy.
And a narrative reporter submitted.
No narrative submitted, okay. I think Maile's out of town.
I did see that we, uh, we had the, uh, exhaust system.
Yeah, first payment, yeah.
Payment.
Alright, fire inspection.
Uh, do we wanna make a motion?
There's nothing, not a report to accept.
Oh, okay.
Fire inspectors report here. Reinspected the library, then we're all set. That's about it.
I make a motion to accept the fire inspection report.
All favor?
Aye.
Yes. Alright, whole east department. We do have the chief here.
I like a fireman.
What?
I said I'm not like a fireman.
Yeah, you can be counted on.
I didn't say that, second part.
You applied it. You, it was applied.
He doesn't have a house in the village, so. Let's not worry about it. I met your new clerk, she's very nice. Wonder if we know the chief gave me a ride in his new car on Saturday for the Little League parade.
Maxi.
He wanted to handcuff me, put me in the back, but he allowed me to ride up front and wave to people. I'm sure certain people in the village want me in the back, that's okay.
It's a good report, chief, anything you would like me to, to touch on? Short of reading this entire book.
No, just to remind people of Central Park Place.
Central Park Place, hour changes.
Yeah. Through traffic, doesn't mean that.
Still have to pass that law, though.
Yeah. But you wrote it and you gave it to us, right?
It's been seasoned, yes.
Has been seasoned?
We just need to notice for the public here.
Okay. Do you put that on the list, Dan, for the next?
Unless he has any changes.
As the chief stated, the, the Hart Place is actually a village street and not just an access to the school, so we do have jurisdiction over that street that goes around and out the back, so that's why we're.
Since we've kind of stepped it up, have there still been people going in there trying to?
Haven't had any complaints, so.
Good. Never hear a kid, you hear about it always, yeah, I know who, I know who tells you about it.
Chief, please pass on to Officer Lake. Appreciate his service and wish him well on his, uh, future endeavors.
Will do.
Is there gonna be a cake or anything someday?
I don't know.
No?
To see, I'll see how, when's he turns around here, if I can get one, so. Might have a little go away party.
You trying to, he blows budget already? Buying cakes?
I think the cameras are clay and will pay for themselves relatively short.
Well, I think all, I think all of them will.
Yeah.
You know, the deterrence.
Alright, I make a motion to accept the chief's report.
The bike patrol will probably be starting this weekend.
The bike patrol is? Do you wanna talk about the scooter thing now, or is that like a side thing?
Oh, we can, um.
I did speak with the chief about it.
Yeah, I did some research, um, in nineteen ninety, the board passed something called a vehicle altering law, um, which covers scooters, dirt bikes, minibikes, go karts, student buggies, trail bikes, and mopeds, um, and has similar prohibitions and penalty structure, it doesn't cover skateboards.
But the motorized skateboard, which is a scooter basically, right?
Well, so, it's, it's, it's written pretty broadly, so, yeah, any altering vehicle that is motor propelled or contains a motor to assist the operation of said vehicle, and then it goes into a couple examples.
So what, uh, what can we do about it?
So there's a, a fine structure of a hundred dollars for the first offense, two fifty for the second offense, and then subsequent offenses. There are specific prohibitions against ATVs going on public property, which should be public roads, um, without permission by the governmental authority, or private property without the family's permission, or operating in the night and the night AM.
So, are we in our legal right to confiscate these and hold them until the fine?
So there is a confiscation struct, uh, impounding, um, provision, um, but only under a couple of different specific circumstances, if the identity of the operators and, um, we's like this or.
Gravity.
The operator has no evidence of permission to operate on private property, or the operator is in violation of this chapter, which is a prohibition, so there's a motor, or the, or the ATV is involved in an accident, it's a serious entry or that.
Well, sounds like two and three would almost always apply, right, so we can.
What's the issue here with the skateboard?
The issue is, yeah, there's kids on these motorized scooters, one's got sort of a moped, one's got just like a giant long motorized scooter skateboard, and they just tear ass up and down the roads. With, they don't stop the stop signs, the one went by my house earlier today doing a wheelie, so.
Oh, my wife was watching, she said, she said, she saw that.
She saw that, yeah, well, that's not.
She came home telling you, she said, yeah, let's see this, he's doing a wheelie.
Well, that's not safe, because he also just blows right through the stop sign.
Well, no, I, I'm not arguing with you, I, I just.
And so we haven't really.
We have a slight issue.
It was a big issue.
If they're listening, be aware.
Well, no, it's, there's no more warnings, they, the families have been warned over and over and over.
Your, your issue you're gonna run into is because they are under sixteen. So we can't cite the six, you know, somebody under sixteen, the traffic ticket or village ordinance ticket.
Can we confiscate the scooter?
Sounds like. If you can't find them, I think you're.
It does give you permission to cite the parent correctly if the operator is under sixteen. If you, if you wanna take a look, chief, and I can go over this with you.
Yeah.
Is village ordinance two twelve, um, slash?
So we can cite the, cite the parent.
You can cite the parent.
Parents, okay. You're the one prosecuting it, don't you?
Yeah, I know, I just found this law twenty minutes ago, so.
Uh, I'm, I'm very glad you found it, though. You're making that up easier.
Because we went around and around, does that scooter fall under the ATV, the definition of what's, the village has there?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm talking about, and the scooter, I'm pretty confident would fall under this. Um, it gives other examples of minibikes, altering vehicles, trail bikes, that's, that's pretty similar to what a scooter would be. The skateboard, I don't, I don't know if that's the case.
What, but it's got, it's got a gas engine on it, right?
So anything that assists the operator.
I mean, that was written back in the nineties.
Nineteen ninety.
Everything's evolved here, you know, they've got a little.
The scooter seems to be pretty much covered under this definition, because it's pretty analogous to like a moped is. I don't actually know what a scooter, but.
It's just like a.
It's like a skateboard with a.
Skateboard like this, long with a motor and then steer it.
I mean, what we could do is we could broaden the definition of this.
I think, I think it'd be wise to do that.
Yeah. To apply to more, or maybe all motorized recreation vehicles.
I'll get, I'll get together with you and perhaps propose something.
It wouldn't be hard to just, we would only change the definitions section, um, because ATV isn't defined, um, term, so it actually wouldn't have to be changed anywhere else besides the initial definition section.
That's the issue we kept having with this.
Yeah, I would just say anything, anything involves an electric or gas motor.
Not capable of being registered.
What was that?
Not capable of being registered.
Yeah, they, they talk about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Alright, anything else for the chief?
I made a motion, consecutive.
All favor?
Aye.
Can't go yet, though. I, I just got a feeling, chief. Okay, recreation. Zach, anything you wanna touch on, the highlights?
Um, two things that actually aren't on the list that I did today. On our village website, I added the, on the left hand side, there's four or five of the lines you can click on to start navigating. I added one for the concert series, you click on it and it just gives you the dates and, uh, the bands.
Okay.
You don't have to go search for it, and the other one that I've got a draft ready to put there is a contact, uh, contact button, so people can click on that, easily find all of our information.
Oh, good.
Because as of now, um, Kristen gets calls all the time of people looking for the numbers, so you guys navigate through the whole website.
Yeah, so that makes sense.
The only issue I foresee with that is, I mean, all the information, all the contact info is on our website as it is, is, you know, people might start getting more phone calls than they anticipated.
That's fine, we just have to make sure that my cellphone is the number that's on there and not the office phone.
Okay. Um, so once I finish that up, I'll, I'll put that up there, too.
Did you happen to break the Facebook feed?
I flagged.
No, no, the, the Facebook feed on the village website?
No, I saw that, though.
Did it broken?
Yeah.
Alright, so it might be the plugin, so we'll have to contact.
Probably, yeah, I'll write it. I'll look at it, maybe I can fix it.
Okay. And you know we're gonna do the refund policy later?
Yeah. Uh, rec flyers are all off the school, sent out last week. Um, this Saturday is our last arts and crafts program before, uh, the rec band, uh, mobile arts and craft band starts up in, like, next month. Um, I ordered the AD machine, um, Carter gave me the quote that they obviously got, and they, uh, they took that price, so that's good. Um, it's being shipped here, but it has the fire department's name on it, if I'm mistaken, if anybody sees that crap before they take it over there. And it's also technically on the paperwork, it's billed to the fire department, so that needs to get changed, too.
Okay.
Um. Uh, Little League fencing at Greg's Field, um, I saw that in action the other day. I saw it stop a few ball balls, and everybody said good things about it, I did see one ball come over and almost hit somebody, though. Um, if we wanna completely eliminate that, the only option is dome netting, so it's stage two of the plan, if that's where we wanna go, it's so that we can.
Do we have a price code on the dome netting?
No, not yet. We, we have a lot of netting, um, a lot of infrastructure already in place to do some of it, and it's just a matter of writing down who's doing what, um, you know, responsibilities, whose time of the year, puts up, puts it down. For example, there's hooks already in the concession stand roof that can be run to the two big fields. You probably don't need netting on the other side for this too smaller field, that can only be planned out. Um, I don't think the expense is gonna be as big as, uh, we've anticipated in the past. I think it's something that between EPW, rec, and Little League themselves, getting people up to hook the netting up and take it down, it's, uh, it's gonna take some manpower, so.
Zach, the, did you get to do one of the foul lines, too?
Uh, it's still working on that. It's not complete yet, um, they're still all bent over, but the plan is to put some, some serious posts in the ground and kind of run new netting along it. Um, I'd advise people who are there now to kind of stay away from those spots, because they're not gonna do a whole lot.
Yeah, I was talking to some of the coaches, now is one they're concerned, especially in the Little League field, the first base sign.
Yeah.
That needs to be tightened up quite a bit.
Definitely, yeah.
Signage out there, maybe?
Would it signage out?
Some signage, say this is a danger area.
Maybe.
Watch ball balls, you know.
Little League was supposed to be doing that, I didn't see any signs up there, but it's still, it's a warning, but we still need to get the.
I agree.
The Little League said they were gonna do that, and that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay. It was on the news, some seven year old got hit in the head with a foul ball, so, I mean, and got hurt pretty bad, so we don't want it here. It's some other city someplace. Could happen here.
The, I had a meeting with Ty, uh, last week about the, this puppet series idea. For anybody listening, uh, somebody came and proposed a marionette series, so it'd be a four show series and workshop. Um, Ty liked it, uh, I trust Ty's instinct, you know, he brings in really good acts in the village, so if he likes it, I think it's a no brainer. Um, the cost for that, you know, sponsored by rec in part, is, I think it's twenty-six hundred dollars? Twenty-five hundred dollars from, from the village, that's six hundred and twenty-five dollars per show. Um, I don't know if that's something we can afford, I think it is, um.
I, one of the questions I asked in the email before, so that includes lunch for the kids?
Uh, we talked about that, I think it's better than individuals bringing their own food.
Okay, and then?
Or possibly, uh, something that the center sets up.
And then, how many can, uh, can be accommodated by that?
The, as many as they can fit in their, their show area. The, as many as they can fit in their, their show area. What they, they said to us that one twenty-five or more.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a pretty big thing. Um, I don't know that I anticipate a hundred twenty-five, but, um, I mean, the center has a big draw, so.
How long is the show? I, I'm not, I mean.
About, I think about an hour for the show and then about an hour for the, uh, the workshop.
So the kids actually maybe get to?
Oh, yeah.
The same.
Everybody gets to build one and then everybody gets to kind of play with it.
And they'll have enough materials?
Yeah.
And that's covered?
Yeah. Um, promotional, uh, stuff, Ty is very good with the social media, um, targeted, uh, advertisements, um, so I can learn a few things from him. Uh, I can get flyers into the schools, as long as, as long as it's sponsored by Homer Rec, that shouldn't be a problem. Um, I think this is a, uh, type of programming that people have been asking for since I started. Um, it's not sports oriented. We're giving, giving kids who, you know, don't care about sports or don't wanna play them, something else to do. And granted, it's for a younger age set up till, uh, fourth or fifth grade, but I think it's more.
So looking at this chart, if you want to start out with no charge, I mean, possibly a year after?
I think if we charge money for the. I think we're gonna scare people away, especially since it's so new. We do have two test shows coming up, but I, I told them we'd give them three hundred dollars for, for one, and, uh, sorry if they aren't just gonna sponsor the other. Um, I think that'll kind of give us a good idea, um, as to how it's gonna go. I, I wouldn't advise charging for it, I think it's something that we pay for out of the rec budget.
So the test shows are August third and October twentieth, when are they thinking they would run these next year?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, of course, uh, tends to twenty nineteen.
Right. Oh, genius.
Um. Well, I kinda like it.
No, I do too.
We'll see how it goes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Zach, I like this, we got the test shows, we can test the waters and, uh, something that, you know.
And, and part of that test would be, would you be willing to pay two bucks, three bucks, and, you know, and make the grant? And that should be, uh, part of the, um, the test.
So Zach, is there anything you need from us on that?
I don't believe so.
I like the part that you stated, you know, not everybody plays sport.
Right.
As an alternative.
And that was one of the first things people were talking to me about when I came in here was, uh, we've got kids who don't play sports, we've got kids who don't play T-ball, and, you know, rather than sitting home on the tablets like they do, they, they don't have things to do. Um, so it's certainly a constructive activity that.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, I like it. For it. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, guys. I think that's.
Well, I moved to, uh, acceptance report is written.
Ball paper?
Aye.
The answers. All right, another new one here, we got the, uh, water billing report from Kristen.
I was, uh, looking at the budget the other day and it still says that we're taxing people for water and sewer. And so I'll defer to our work session to figure out what's going on, because I thought we were, we're trying to make it equal, but it's.
Oh, you mean we're still?
On our webpage right now.
Oh, you mean we're still having to?
Sixty K for, uh, sewer and forty K for water taxing, and that's had your name signed up. It's on the webpage, so you can see it, so we saw that part. I, I, I know we tried to make sure it was users and, you know, we've been having issues with water meters and trying to get everything figured out, so. Nobody's been jumping on anybody's sword or beating anybody up, but we'll have to.
Yeah, I mean.
That was one of the things we wanted to address, that users pay for what they use and not having taxpayers who aren't using it pay. So I, I'd like to very much fix that, or if that's an error, correct it. We'll do that at a work session, not the, isn't for the nuts and bolts fair.
Some of the stuff is because, uh, when we do a job like the water line going on to there, that is not really considered onto your water bill. You know, that's, that's gotta come from taxpayer money. It's not that.
What's that again?
When we're doing like a, the water line over here, do at the fire station.
Yeah.
That's not really coming from your water billing and sewer billing, that's gonna have to come out of taxpayer or something like that. Or reserve, it's gotta come out of one guy.
Yeah. Nope, I, I, I'm tracking it.
So that's how we're gonna solve this, so it doesn't look so bad. We'll either put it on the fire department, who's using the water, and put it on their budget, or the fire department, or at least whoever's using the water. It's not right. We should budget for it, even though that may be a legit tax for the village, should be accounted different versus the generic. It, it looks bad for me.
I agree.
All right, well, we'll talk, we'll talk a little bit in the work session.
And then we'll work them up for a good solution.
Uh, this is a pretty thorough report, Kristen's very good. All right, this is, uh, I'll forget for information I don't want.
Yeah, the, uh, I saw the, uh, just the capabilities of the census meters are pretty extensive. But we're still, I think we're still figuring out all the tricks to this, so I don't wanna promise something yet.
Right.
Before we are fully aware of its capabilities.
Buzz, how much are those census meters each?
The meters are about a hundred thirty-nine bucks and then we figure another hundred bucks for the outside green.
And, and.
And that's the rate we're getting, because we're, you know, we're buying a lot more too, so.
And so, and the install charge is almost the same amount then, though, right?
It goes.
Yeah, so we got a little pushback from the city on, uh, reimbursing us for our time installing them, so we may step out of that grant. Because what's the point of getting in a grant where we're not gonna get reimbursed for rea, for installing the meters, when we can just buy the meters ourselves?
Well, this, this next round, we, we are, because we're getting another hundred, hundred thirty-seven meters, because we're putting in them ourselves and not paying anybody, so.
So they're just gonna give us extra meters?
We're getting extra meters, putting them in ourselves. We normally got two hundred and eleven meters and this is like three hundred, pretty close to almost four hundred meters, is it?
But that doesn't cover what we did this time, right?
No.
Right.
Round two, round two did not cover.
Yeah, so we still have to try to get money out of them somehow for that, since it's like eleven thousand dollars. So I'll work on that, but then they report it.
But this, this next time, we're, we're gonna help this.
Okay, good, all right, good. All right, well, we're on your report here, uh.
And I also heard the city might be trying to put their own in too.
Oh, they're gonna, I talked to Brian about it and I said, you know, I don't know why you guys bother him if, if, because they said that, he said they were having the same troubles of under the freeway. So. Any highlights here, do you wanna touch on Buzz?
Well, ours to get in here, truck came in this week.
Truck finally came in?
Truck.
You riding around hawking a horn?
Uh, we haven't got it yet, they're still, still getting the process, but it's, it's had come this week. Oh, they like last month, that was another, another month of winter, really, like, ever was, so that kind of slows down, so most of it was just maintenance and, I would say like the generator, we've got that cleared up. Never know where you're gonna get electrical storm, I bought the power, so get that going.
Did, uh, did everything get done at over at John Street or no?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, I got that all wrapped up today.
Did you?
Yeah.
See, does he seem happy?
I haven't talked to him yet, so, I haven't heard nothing from him.
I'll have to go over and take a look at it and see if he's. There was an issue with one of our, was it, was it a s?
It was storm drain.
Storm drain?
Storm drain.
And where, where the concrete apron met, his asphalt driveway would always buckle. Terrible driveway, they had to replace, you know, patch it every year.
Flower, maybe, or something.
So we, yeah, so what did you, just extend this, the concrete apron?
Well, we raised the grade, so it's a little bit higher, as it was way low, raised it up about six inches. Um, cut back on his driveway ways, it, because what, what it was doing was actually getting under his driveway, freezing and raising his driveway up and cracking his driveway, so. Hopefully we eliminated that part, it's one of those jobs where, you know, it never really ends, because the black tattered trying to connect to is not the end of shape, so.
Right.
We cut back ways on his driveway, reshaped it.
Okay. Tom, what's up?
Buzz, is that the one on corner of Tobin and John or?
Uh, Durwood.
Okay, okay, the other end of, of John, so, okay. Sorry.
Any other, uh?
Well, we got our, uh, okay from the public department to put that on.
I saw that, I saw that the engineer did his thing.
Yeah.
Good.
That finalized, still checking on some more directional boards, they have another guy who wants to put a bid in, but. Kind of waiting on him, he's, uh, the time that he, he able to get here might be not the right time, that's the biggest thing, so.
How many bids do we have?
We got two so far.
From?
From, uh, Grant Street and the other one is from, uh, from, uh, Syracuse.
No bid from W two L?
I haven't got that yet. I could grab those changes, man.
Might as well try. All right, anything else?
Uh, make a motion to accept the water report.
Second.
Ball paper?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Who was up at four? Who's here that would, uh, like to speak?
I did, uh, I'm Don Lawson. I want to apologize to the board and to my fellow Colonel, Colonel Havitt. I wrote the, I wrote that letter to the editor, I was kind of, uh, a little peeved about the amount of money that's going into this fantastic river walk. But, uh, I've had a change of heart.
Uh-oh.
And I, I wanna.
He's gonna attack me with a paddle.
I wanna get the canoe concession when you, uh, finally get it straight around.
He's gonna attack you with a paddle.
But, uh, no, I, I didn't realize that it was, uh, money for a particular project. But then I heard the talk about the sewer, I didn't realize you guys would act so soon on that sewer thing.
It's been years.
But I'm, uh, I mean, I was in the plumbing business with my dad back in the fifties to sixties, and I know how, how bad the, uh, especially the water lines were in those days. And here we are sixty years later and I can't believe it's, uh, any better, but I, I, I really think the, uh, I think we're still gonna spend more money than you're planning on that, with those two garages you've gotta take out.
Yeah, the, so the grant is for, uh, purchasing and, and removing those two garages and then purchasing the budget in site.
Yeah.
And then just essentially turning it into grass.
How far up you're gonna go, there's more housing up towards the, uh, the circus house there.
That's all the grant covers.
Okay.
So we might have, you know, if we apply for another grant down the road, but right now it's just to remove those two repair facilities.
Yeah.
And then the budget in, put in some grass, make it look nice, and that's, that's pretty much as, as far as it goes this time.
Okay.
We're, the grant only allows them to pay the assessed value of those properties, because the grant is really what buys them, so.
Is there any mother, money in there for dredging the rivers, or they can get the, the like showboats up and down or something like that?
Dredging the river is, uh, yeah.
Wow. I like it.
And is the, the old Natalite market, is that entirely in Cortlandville, does anybody know?
That's in the village.
That's in the village.
It's a shame that can't be utilized for something, like a, a farmer's market or a, uh, food bank or something, there's refrigeration and everything there.
Oh, this is awesome, we've, uh, that is a, uh, one of the buildings on our vacant building report that was added to it. So we'll be sending a letter to the current owners to find out what they plan on doing with it.
It's a shame it can't be utilized, I mean, the.
I think it can be, it will be.
I hope so.
I gotta go, I know the owner, I, I just need to go up and talk to him and see what, see what his intentions are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then thanks for coming, you didn't have to come to apologize.
Well, I had to show you my paddle.
I like the paddle. Yeah. Anyone else like to speak? No? Nope, moving on.
Nobody typed in anything?
Nope.
God, I'm waiting, just waiting. Somebody's gotta do it.
We have three people watching.
All right.
Three right now, we had five or six.
One of you three people type in a question, please.
They'll hear this in twenty seconds, there's a little bit of delay.
All right. All right.
I think we're up for, uh, the school.
The school, they have waited patiently.
Yes, they have, let me get out of the way here.
And Mike, you haven't missed any of the advisory board meetings, I just haven't had one.
I was gonna ask that, yeah, I, ten got an email, I figured maybe I was on a.
No, not on the bad list, everybody thinks they're on the bad list or they missed it, so.
I don't know, I was actually pointing toward the screen, if that works. Um, thank you very much, folks, for having us this evening. Superintendent Russo had a family obligation, actually a family member was being honored and prepped this evening, uh, so they, she was not able to be here. So just running through our budget, and I'm sorry, I have my back to you here. Sorry, no, you don't. Um, we have our, our major buttery, budgeting considerations, uh, that we have every year. Uh, full phase in of foundation aid, which is our aid per pupil from the state. Our federal and state mandated items, our employee contractual items, um, again, we have to adhere to the contract guidelines for salaries. And a two percent tax levy limit and a tax freeze, which really isn't a two percent tax levy limit, and we'll get into that a little bit. As you can see, Homer, much like many other school districts in central New York and New York State, the enrollment is dropping. What we're seeing is, we're seeing lower birth rates, we're seeing smaller kindergarten classes coming in, with some of our bigger classes graduating each year. Um, so this year we projected a forty-one student decrease. Taking a look at the live birth chart, this actually kind of tells the tale here. The orange line shows you the kindergarten, number of kindergarten students. So in two thousand and ten, we were right up to a hundred and forty children coming in. As you can see, we've dropped to around a hundred and twenty. If you look, this is our live birth rate. And really what happens is you have to project five years out from that birth year to really see what your kindergarten numbers are going to be. So we're starting to see classes coming in of ninety-six, a hundred and five, um, really down from, from, uh, the heyday, with classes graduating out around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty. What really shows concern here is you're looking right around two thousand and seventeen, is that that class will come in in two thousand and twenty-two, you're projecting under a hundred students. The good news, the live birth rate's projected to go back up. So, um, we'll look for those class sizes, hopefully to either maintain or to rise a little bit going forward. Now, kind of the, the opposite of what we're looking at here in the district, um, with enrollment going down, we're looking at our free and reduced numbers going up, or our poverty level going up. So here in two thousand and seven, our rate was twenty-four point six two percent for free and reduced in the district. Up to two thousand and seventeen, and it's actually climbed a little bit this year as well, so you're looking at forty-one point three two percent. So you're seeing where enrollment's dropping, free and reduce is rising, and that's happening countywide. You're seeing school districts like Portland, um, Cincinnates, um, McGraw, Marathon, um, they're offering, actually in their lunch programs, an all-inclusive free lunch program, because their numbers are up over fifty percent. Um, so you're seeing that climb. Where it bodes for us positively, because I had mentioned foundation aid, which is aid per pupil, with our numbers dropping, with free and reduced going up, that's an indicator, that actually brings more aid back into the district. Our expenditure per pupil, it's just general education, really what this factors in, folks, is what we're spending on instruction for regular aid students. It doesn't factor in transportation or capital projects, um, it factors in straight-up education, um, with staff and with materials. You can see, uh, two hundred thousand dollar increase, or two, uh, two hundred dollar increase, excuse me, for this year. We talked about foundation aid. We have two sets of pyramids here. The actual, let me go back. In the blue, what we receive each year per pupil, and our foundation aid, and the orange, a full phase in. There have been two court cases against New York State to run formulas to fully phase in foundation aid, the true aid per student. If they fully ran that formula, you can see not only through the, the graphic depiction, but you can see that on the bottom, we've been shorted as a district from two thousand seven eight, fifty-five million, seven hundred and four thousand, six hundred and three dollars in foundation aid. That's huge. The impact that it has across the state, now it's not unique to Homer, they have not run the formula for every district in New York State. They're starting to push forward, trying to get a little bit more of the measure, um, but they have not adhered to the, um, to the law yet. Our additions and reductions, um, contained in our expenditures for this year. We are going to bring, uh, a multiple handicap class back from BOSI's and bring them back in-house this year, which we're very excited about. Um, some of the students were currently in the STAR program through OCM BOSI's, um, which now will be part of the Homer district. And with that, we'll save about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars doing so. Um, with that, we have a junior high special ed teacher moving from the junior high to the high school to fill that position, so we won't be hiring new for that classroom. Probably over the last eight, nine years, we've reduced thirty positions in the district. We haven't fired people, people have not lost their jobs, through attrition, we reduced that many positions. Many of those positions have been in the K six area, just because of declining enrollment. Now with that declining enrollment starting to catch up in junior high and high school, now we're seeing reductions there. So we have, uh, a section of high school social studies, a section of high school English, and one section of junior high math, academic intervention services that are going to be reduced this year. We've also had in the last three years, a little under thirty retirements, district-wide, which is, which is unheard of. Um, but people's retirement time have come due, and we do have a, a breakage there between an older teacher going out and a new teacher coming in. So we, we realize that in our budget as well. If you've been to the, uh, to the high school and seen the great capital improvements that have gone on there, um, in the basement, or in the bottom where the locker rooms are, that's been increased probably threefold. And in that, um, we found a need to have some additional supervision, not only in that area, but also, um, in the cafeteria during the day as well. So we're going to be adding a teacher's assistant for that. One of the great new programs we added this year in Homer was a pre-K program, um, we were able to service eighteen students. Uh, during the year, we actually received from New York State a grant for that pre-K program, to run that program. We've added into the budget this year, two more classrooms, so we're gonna be able to service fifty-four children. Um, we had eighty-two applications this year, so there is a great need for it. Um, so we're really answering the call from our community to add those more pre-K programs, um, which is, is just outstanding for the kids and the families. School resource officers, pairing here with the village, um, we are looking to add three SROs in the budget next year. So we will have an active SRO in every school building during the day. The Board of Education, the community, um, have cited a need, um, for safety, just given the recent events in school districts and, and other community situations. Um, and we, we feel very happy, um, with the partnering we've already done with, with the village and with the SROs. They really offer, um, a unique experience to work with the children during the day, not just be a protective force, but also be, um, a resource for our kids and for our teachers. It's really been an excellent opportunity. Innovation grants, you can see in the pictures here, um, it's not your traditional classroom. We have found through research, um, through experience, the children learn in a lot of different ways. You can see in the first picture, the table where kids are actually, now we are discouraged as kids, never write on the desk at school. So this, we flipped it now, we flipped the idea, um, where kids are working, putting their ideas down in real time. Um, we've introduced one-to-one computing, um, all the way up from sixth grade, and actually we're dropping it down into the intermediate school. And these are little work centers where children can work together cooperatively in groups. The last piece, which is a really neat function we've done in the library and media center, we've started in with podcasting. So the kids who are interested in, um, in a broadcasting career, um, have started to do some podcasting. And actually, for next year, we have well over ten staff members that have put in for innovation grants, and we'll be funding those grants again in the district. Um, it's a really exciting time, and they, and part of it, the teachers, when they receive the grant, they have to do an open house and a video, and invite people in at any time to come check out what they're doing with students, so it really does become infectious, it's a really nice thing. Now the nuts and bolts, how are we gonna pay for this? Uh, in our revenue sources, we have some identified revenue sources, the biggest one for the district is state aid. We're gonna see an eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-dollar increase. Four hundred thousand dollars of that foundation aid, aid per pupil. Another two hundred thousand of that state aid will be transportation, through our bus leasing, the state has finally caught up with their paperwork, and we're being credited now with the buses we currently lease. The last bit of state aid will be for our, um, now, we're phasing out into phase three of our twenty-one million, million-dollar capital project. We're already starting to receive aid on phases one and two. Our local sources may come from rents, um, E-rate is, uh, reimbursable technology from the federal government. Other miscellaneous revenues that come in, we're proposing that will stay the same. The tax levy, for the last few years, we've gone out at a zero percent increase, this year we're going out at a one-point-nine percent increase, um, asking for three-hundred-and-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Our reserves are debt service, and we have a debt service reserve that we can draw from to help cover past capital projects. Um, we are maintaining that current level. Um, when I first came into the district, because of gap elimination, we were pulling millions out of that reserve. We're able to kinda stop and slow down, um, with the, the debt service, and the board is looking at using this amount. This will carry us in the debt service reserve to twenty thirty-seven by using this. Our fund balance, everybody has a checking account at home, this is our plan, or, excuse me, a savings account, this is our savings account, the planned fund balance. We put it in as a revenue, if we get to that point in our spending where we need it, we have it. Um, but it's something, again, that's built in every year into the budget. So we're looking at bringing in forty-two million, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, um, and again, it's a change of, of one-point-one million. Our expenditures, again, we are expending the same amount, but just to kinda break it down a little bit, we talked about some of the new programming, some of the things we want to do, some of the costs that we have, that we know we're gonna have every year. So, we look at the increase in the tax levy, um, at three-hundred-and-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. With our health insurance that we offer, that goes up seven to eight percent a year. For the district itself, the increase this year is three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, just for health insurance. So again, that just kinda gives you an idea with our expenditures, what we're facing year to year. So we're looking at, again, matching the expenditures with the revenue with a gap of zero. The tax levy and the tax levy threshold, you hit a two percent tax cap. Really the two percent that they have in that is actually a multiplier in our fifteen-step formula. The tax levy threshold was set forth, that really has to do with voting on the budget. If you come at or under the tax levy threshold, it actually is a fifty percent vote plus one voter for a yes. If you go above the threshold, it's a sixty percent vote, you have to have sixty percent yes. If you don't, you immediately go back to last year's budget number. Um, as you can see, in the district, we've got anywhere, as a threshold, four-point-four-nine. One year we had point four-six percent, that was the amount that we could raise taxes in that, well, through the, the threshold. Believe it or not, some districts in the state start off with a negative. They start out with a negative threshold, so just to get to the same amount they were the year before, they have to have a sixty percent vote of yes. So, we are proposing, excuse me. Go back there. We are proposing going out at a one-point-nine percent increase, our threshold was four-point-oh-eight. The nice thing about this as well, because we stay under the threshold, taxpayers do receive a small rebate check back. Now, a big question, what's it gonna look like in my tax bill? What we've done is taken this year's seventeen, eighteen property assessments, we haven't, we haven't calculated in exemptions, and based on that, we've estimated an increase of thirty-seven cents per a thousand assessed. So you can see the chart in front of you, this is just, again, our average to give the taxpayers an idea of what the increase would look like in their tax bill. Again, that will change based on assessments, um, equalization values as you go forward closer to August. We have three propositions on our vote next Tuesday. The first is to expend forty-two million, fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight dollars in the tax necessarily therefore. The second, our bus leasing, we are going into our fifth year of bus leasing. It's been very advantageous to the district, we've saved just under three hundred thousand dollars in doing so, through actually, through interest rates and not having to pay for bus parts. That's been huge for us. With that, we are looking to lease five buses and one wheelchair box. The nice thing about the phase-in program, doing this over five years, is we didn't take our whole fleet and lease it at one time. If at a point in the future, it becomes more advantageous to go back to buying buses, we can start it right then and there, and phase that back in if we need to. The Board of Education also, um, will be looking to purchase two Dodge Caravans. We have a hundred percent DOT rating, the guys in our shop over at the bus garage are outstanding. They've been able to maintain our vans and our fleet very, very well over the years. But our vans are getting up in years, so we have, uh, two van a year in replenishment program for the next few years. So hell, if you need more vans.
I know, I'm smiling because we buy your old vans.
I've got, I've got two that are gonna come online this year, so.
Zach will be over to take a look at them.
Alright. But again, it's a testament too to our bus leasing, that our mechanics actually do a lot of our own work on the leased buses, and that reflects back to us positively because parts that aren't covered under warranty are provided at us at a very, very low cost. The last proposition, proposition number three, we are, through being good neighbors with the Phillips Three Library, looking to put out their proposition to raise from a hundred and ten thousand to a hundred and thirteen thousand. We have three open Board of Education seats, we have four people running for those seats. Ashelle Jacoby, Shanice Riley-Jay, Michael Kilmer, and Charles Tomino are the four people running. Our vote again is next Tuesday, May fifteenth, from seven in the morning to nine at night at the Old Music Building. Can I answer any questions? Yes.
Uh, wins the lottery for the pre-K.
They will actually be selecting, from what I know, prior to July one.
And you said how many applicants and how many openings?
They had, if the budget passes.
Right.
We'll have fifty-four openings, they've had eighty-two applications. And again, the lottery, um, they do a lottery system, it has to be representative of the, the school district itself. So there's a lottery based on socioeconomic, um, special needs, there's three or four different categories where the lottery is based. The percentages that they fill the spots with it.
What's the criteria for, uh, village kids getting bussing? It seemed like an awful lot of buses in the village.
We, we have kids getting picked up, and that's a great question. Um, we need to go back and reevaluate our walker program. We have kids getting picked up, but they're being picked up on buses that are coming to the buildings themselves. So, it's not like it's a special bus that just runs through the village, picking up kids, usually when runs are coming back in from Scott, from Preble, from, from Truckston, they're grabbing those kids on the way in. So it's not anything particular, but again, it's, it's a question that has come up, looking at, um, you know, are, do, are we gonna look at a walking program again in the district?
Be a great idea.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you very much. And Mike, uh, at some point we're gonna talk about that church too.
Okay, give me a hour.
Okay, thank you.
Just gonna give another reporter?
You can go, chief. I'll explain later.
Chief, how are those, uh, school resource officers gonna fit in?
I've got actually a couple of officers that work for me part-time that are interested in this, in the spot, so. So, working on some other things too, so.
Thanks, chief, have a good night.
You too.
Thanks, chief.
See ya.
And we'll be interested to see where they all come from across the state. If every school district decides to have an increased SRO. Where does that person all come from? I mean, people are retired, you have to be trained.
And where's the, the money coming from?
Well, school pays more.
No, I, I know.
The tax money does.
The whole thing coming from, it's gonna, that's, that's gonna increase, not in the village for us. It's more for the residents of the school district.
Yeah, but that's a, it spreads the burden over a much wider area.
Have a good night, Don.
Thank you.
Okay, so we need to approve Mike Park to be the village representative on the Portland County Workers' Compensation Committee.
Oh, okay. Yep, uh, the town did the same thing, he is gonna represent the town as well, so I think that just keeps things aligned for us. And he's a, a great, uh, choice for what needs to be done. So, I make a motion that we, uh, approve Mike to be the, Mike Park to be the village representative on the Corlin County's Workers' Compensation Committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Alright, next, approve, the approval of Matthew Stockman as volunteer fireman, I reviewed his application, looks fine and dainty to me.
Same.
Any, uh, discussion on that?
Uh, now I make a motion that we approve Matthew Stockman as a volunteer fireman.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the CDVG rehabilitation loan reimbursement for overpayment in the amount of seven hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-seven cents to Kevin and Deborah Slack.
That was my wife's phone.
You blame her, cause she's.
Wow. And you just gave her under the bus, I hope it wasn't a little, uh, a leased bus.
So we talked about this, someone make a motion? You have to abstain, of course.
I'll make the motion to do it.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous with the three of us and Kevin abstaining. Uh, approval of the Relay for Life banner to be displayed the week of six-ten to six-sixteen. Someone make a motion?
I'll make the motion to do that, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, approval of the updated recreational sports program refund policy. So, the, uh, updated the old one. We've got two very different ones here sitting here.
There's, uh, two parts to it, if you're looking at, um.
Two pages?
Well, there are two pages, but there's, they're separate, it's not page one, page two, it's page one and page one. The first part that says the refund policy at the top, that's what people will see, that's what will be posted. And then the second part, if you have it, is how, explains how I go about the process.
Got it.
So this is what gets posted?
Yes.
And this is what the actual process is, what happened?
Exactly, yeah.
Got it.
I like it, you know, I think it's great.
So, just to, uh, verbalize it, um, refunds that require, uh, supervision from clerk, deputy clerk, whoever, um, those are only, those are limited to, uh, So, just to, uh, verbalize it, um, refunds that require, uh, supervision from clerk, deputy clerk, whoever, um, those are only, those are limited to, uh, residency refunds and refunds that happen, um, before program starts or any money's expended. One thing actually I'm remembering now that Dan and I talked about is refunding, uh, for park and pavilion reservations, if we get a electronic, um, what's the word I'm looking for? There's a seventy, a deposit, hundred dollar deposit, is, how does that play into this? I, at this point forgot to put that in there, so, um, is that something that needs to be approved of or I can do under the supervision of? Dan, for example?
Yeah.
We don't have any of those right now. Um, people are still bringing them, a paper check in when they pick up the keys. But I have a feeling we're gonna start moving towards, uh, all digital on it.
That'd be good. Cause are the parks' schedules online so people can see what's open and what's not?
Yeah.
Excellent.
And people can, people can reserve them and pay for them online.
Right online? Oh, man, you're making my dreams come true.
We have had some people come in and do it, uh, old school.
That's me.
Right, we don't let them do the deposit online.
We're not getting deposit online.
So they, they pay the seventy-five dollar fee, we get that, and then they come bring in a, uh, check. And the reason we, who, I went that route initially was I had somebody call and, uh, concerned about pulling that hundred dollar deposit out of their ATM card. Their bank account, for example.
Right.
Um, and it sits there, it sits in our, uh, in our, in our pocket, basically. It can sit there for three months. If they book something early on and have to pay that fee, that, you hold on to it.
Right.
Um, then it's that person is out that hundred dollars.
Just full opposite, you pay first and then you deposit the day you pick up the key, which makes sense. Cause you would've lost the seventy-five.
Treasure questionable of how we're gonna.
Right.
Need to track it down, watching it float, and watching it go, and how does it affect our books? So there's a little bit of discussions to be had there.
I like it, I like your new way.
We should get to it.
Yeah, we can, we can get this action out and then we can talk.
On that, and actually I forgot to ask during my report, if we can jump back to that for a second.
Sure.
Um, I did have a request for a refund, and it's actually, actually not a refund, it's a moving the registration fee from one program to another, from T-ball to soccer.
Okay.
Um, I don't see a problem with it. They're, they're still participating in a rec program as long as they pay, uh, to cover their shirt, their expenses in the program.
And they're willing to do that?
I believe so. I, I sent an email saying that's what, probably what we'd have to do, and I think that's reasonable.
If they pay for the, pay the extra for the shirt.
Right. Five dollars.
Any, any additional comes.
Right, yeah.
That's fine. I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept this refund policy.
Zach, did this really didn't change too much from what the policy was already existed?
Correct. The, there's like a three steps to it, uh, the three scenarios. Prior to any expenses, you get a hundred percent refund before the program starts. If your child gets injured before the program starts, uh, but after things have been ordered, like t-shirts, for example, or other equipments, fifty percent back. And I, any other scenario is gonna be like that. So before the program starts, no expenses, but if your child gets injured, you're gonna get that back.
Like I said, it's not really that, it's not.
Right.
Not bankrupting anybody.
I know, it's not much of a change than what has already existed, just requires a little more.
People have asked, there's been some T-ball kids who either haven't shown up or haven't paid, but we're into fourth week almost already, so.
Is what it is.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the updated recreational sports program refund policy as set forth, uh, here.
Second?
All favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right.
Zach, good job on.
Thank you.
All right, budget transfers.
Treasure these mail, Mitch.
So this is, uh, I assume the equalizing that we talked about?
Yes, this is making, um, anything that's in the red back into black back to the whole, so there's no, uh, negative balances on any, on any budget line. And while you can see most are within the confines of like, um, like expenditures or like departments, there are some that couldn't be helped and had to go outside of that. If there was enough money to move around.
I don't see it because we have the extended winter, that's why our snow removal personnel services are, uh, are up.
Lots of, lots of overtime, lots of salt in those.
That was probably the biggest, those are the biggest, uh, numbers right there. Fifty thousand. Yeah, those, those were seven, seven thousand. And then between personnel services and contractual.
And then if you just, if you throw on office street maintenance stuff, that adds another ton of stuff. So we should probably sit down and talk about this, cause that means we missed the mark on our budget by quite a bit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we somehow maybe a work session or something?
Next work session, bring in Mike.
Put some red or something and says, okay, who, who missed it, who got better? We, we oughta look at that and just, cause that'll help us next year. Cause that means this year's budget is probably wrong by a lot in certain areas, maybe, maybe not.
Well, I think partly it depends upon the weather, like we have to.
If.
Well, if that's the answer, it's an old, it's an old ringer.
But we're over, when those two things were over, over a hundred thousand dollars we missed by. That's a big miss.
Yeah, we, we still need to look at it.
Yeah.
One, it counts for a little bit, but we, yeah, you're right, we need to look at it.
I just wanna look at it in some detail and not burn up everybody's night.
All right, so I'm gonna add that to the work session.
Please, yeah. Now, what is this? It, it ends up being a hundred and forty-one thousand, and that's, and what does that mean? We, we have. We have to find that out of reserves?
No. It's moving money on from budget lines to budget lines.
I saw that.
So that's, that's all it is. It's not, it's not a, it's not a finding money, the money is already sitting there within your budget.
Okay.
You're just taking from.
Someone could understand.
So it's a transfer from to.
Right.
This might. We had a transfer.
You're taking from an account that's positive to an account that's negative. And that's, so it's a wash.
Right.
At the end of the day, it's a wash.
But what?
It's just making the budgets whole, that you have to make whole, you can't leave the negative.
Oh, I, I understand that. So in effect, how did our budget go? We didn't have to use that two-hundred-and-four-thousand-dollar deficit?
Show in the summaries, we spent less and.
Yeah.
So we made more.
We did not go into fund balance that.
Right. But see, what we need to look at in this though, for the work session is, obviously, the transfer two is over here, right?
Right, yes.
With who it is. I wanna, we need to look and see where it's transferring from, um, because obviously we talked about the goal of the budget being that if a department doesn't spend all of their allocation, they don't lose it. It rolls into their reserves, but if we're, if we go in and cannibalize, then that's not really being truthful. But this wasn't our budget. So, or this wasn't my budget. We just stayed with it, you know? You know what I'm saying?
We had to, we had no choice.
Well, we're, we're pretty close on the sewer fund. I mean, if you look at percentages, we were, and water wasn't that far off.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
Well, I don't have a problem with those.
So, but yeah, uh, if, for the work session, Dan, if you could just, and actually what we really need is, uh, and this might be a good project for Donna. Almost like a cheat sheet of the account numbers and what they are, just so that we can quick, yep, so we can just quick look and see, you know, what three-one-two-oh dot four-oh-two is.
Yeah, what's up?
Yeah, that'd be a good project for Donna.
Probably print that right on.
Yeah. Excellent.
Okay, uh, do we need a motion?
Well, we do, we also need to trust, well, I guess we don't, but he'd probably be appreciated to be here for the vote. Well, I guess.
Do we go anything negative?
No.
Don't we have to have one X next?
No.
Three for him, but you need all three to approve it.
I'll vote yes anyway, even though I don't have to. All right, make a motion and Neil second?
I'll make the motion that we approve the transfers.
And second?
All favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Pat doesn't even get to be a part of it.
Okay.
Okay, uh. Discussion of the promulgation of rules regarding the garbage, garbage bin placement. So, you guys know the, the goal of this is just to stop people from leaving their garbage cans out all the time in the village because it looks shoddy. We don't want the village to look shoddy. You missed a vote, Pat, but it's okay. The record reflected it.
What did we vote on?
Uh, equalizing the transfers, I don't know, stop.
Yes.
I think you would've voted yes.
I, I voted yes on that.
In spirit?
In spirit, I was voting yes on that.
Now we're talking about the garbage can laws, and I think we talked about, um, the fine structure being first time's a warning, second time, ten dollars, third time, twenty-five dollars, fourth and every time after a fifty-dollar fine. And this is for people that just leave them out all the time. I mean, it's not trying to catch somebody who doesn't get home from work until eleven o'clock one day and we're not out there, you know, slapping fines on them. Or if they can't get them to the next morning or even a couple of days, it's the people that just leave them there at the curb, day in, day out, weekend and week, week out. And we're just trying to stop that. So.
What do you need?
Uh, yeah, what do we need, Don, tech?
So, um, you get the regulation in place, um, you file with the village clerk, uh, and then, uh, you publish it in fourteen days if it comes effective.
Okay.
So whatever you decide on the final structure, it sounds like your email is pretty much.
Yeah.
We're agreeing on, um, give it official release for village clerk.
Yeah.
Post it and make your sleep, publish it in the newspaper, and then after fourteen days, if it comes effective.
Great.
I mean, I kinda like the idea as a whole, but who's gonna enforce it? Who's gonna be the police that says, you're guilty, you're guilty?
CPW's been doing it.
And how long you put it into effect?
What do you mean?
Say the person gets a warning, and the next week they abide by it, the next week they don't.
No, no. Nope, they've already had their warning.
One warning. It's just like everything else.
Yeah.
Warnings don't start.
You can't reset the shot clock.
Yeah.
No.
But then one guy said, one guy said to me, is you guys are concerned about leaving your garbage cans out if you do, but you got the hundra, you've got this yellow police line somewhere. A nuisance to the.
Sure, the yellow police line.
I said, we're not trying to enforce anything, we just want, not, you know, and it's not everybody.
Right. I mean, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that we have to go through all this for the fifteen or twenty people in the village that refuse to bring their garbage cans in.
Exactly.
But unfortunately we do. But he's not wrong about there being other things that we need to address.
And we're working on it.
And we will get to it.
I told him we're working on it.
We are working on it.
It's just unfortunate that sometimes these things take as months because something shouldn't take that long, but they refuse, and then we have to end up in court.
Right.
Which is ridiculous.
Um, so what do you need, Coach? Do they need to vote out? Are we voting out?
Yeah.
On, uh, setting the time, you can't put it out until five o'clock the day before, again.
Is that your email we're voting in right now?
Yeah, yeah, which I'll send to Dan.
And the fee scale is what?
Uh, yeah, which is first time warning, second time, ten dollars, third time, twenty-five dollars, fourth time and every subsequent time, fifty dollars.
We need to have a piece of paper in front of us right now to do this? We do not?
Cause it's, it's, it's not gonna be a village ordinance, it's just gonna be a regulation under the village ordinance. So it'll, once you guys, uh, give it to the village clerk, can publish it in the newspaper.
Cause I read your email and I liked it.
We don't have the seasoning requirement that we normally do for a village ordinance.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve it.
Second?
Discussion?
I wanna give you an opportunity there.
Any concerns? No? Yes?
Uh, I'm sure we'll get feedback, but I think it's reasonable and, uh.
Yeah, nobody's gonna be really, really hard. I mean, there's a trench or can, or.
And again, yeah, and also.
You gotta slap someone's hand occasionally.
Yeah, and also if it's a case where it's an elderly resident or someone.
Hardships will.
Right, we'll bring in the cans in the forum.
I haven't seen that, that generally has not been the case.
No, I know, it's just people that just don't wanna do it. All right, all favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Was that what you were here for, the garbage cans?
I wanted to see if I was gonna help the old guy get his cans back from Florida. I didn't, I didn't know what you were talking about, it was, I mean, curbside, which is what it is. Or back by the house is still very conspicuous. Some of us have no place we can really.
That's true.
Oh, is that what it was? You thought we were coming after you cause it was on the, now we're gonna have to revisit.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know. You're gonna have to build a structure, Marty. You're gonna have to build a structure. No. Oh, no, no.
No, no. Why do you see the structure?
I wish you would've told me, you, I wouldn't have made you sit here for the whole time for that.
No, this is interesting to see how the parents.
No, but he has a good point. His parents don't have tenants to put him out, you know, so you can't see him from the door.
That's nice, yeah, I mean, I don't really.
Once we got them, you know, they're very prominent in terms of neon green and black.
They are.
What I do like about it is that they're easily, oh, winter jumper, they're getting older. Um, they tend to be visible unless you've got yourself a two-car garage, which I don't.
Yeah, we, you know.
Before I could keep my garbage can in them, now two of them and.
And I don't think, I don't think you should have to keep your garbage cans in your garage either because that's nasty, right? Even if you have a garage, it gets really gross in the summertime, so.
If you drive down Main Street, you look down every driveway, you'll, you'll see them, but you're out of sight.
But when they're back, it's not a big deal, but when you're driving along and they're at the curb everywhere, and that's just when it looks like people don't care about the village.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can sleep tonight. How about you, Marty? You too.
Okay, next thing, uh, county sales tax negotiation update. So I did miss a meeting tonight, the, every, not every, but they're all invited, but, uh, the mayors, uh, city, and then all the town supervisors were invited, but none of the legislators to come up with a game plan. Tomorrow night is the meeting with the legislators about what we're gonna do about the sales tax thing. Love that.
So basically, from what I understand, is all the towns and whatever paid for the update on their system like in court. Now, they don't wanna give any of it back.
Not only do they not wanna give any of it back, they wanna take another million dollars off the top, at least. And so, you know, to pay for the jail or whatever. And my point of view is this. Their inability to properly budget and stay within their spending shouldn't come down as an additional either tax or lack of services that we have to pass on to village residents. Their incompetence, not our fault. So I've made that pretty much clear, because if they, if they reduce the amount of sales tax income that we get by ten percent, we have to turn around and raise our income, our, uh, income tax, or our taxes on our residents by another two percent. Because, you know, it's a third of our revenue stream is the sales tax. And already, we don't get an equal share compared to the towns. No, we get about a third per capita of what the towns get. Now, I think, you know, I talked to Fred, he thinks that possibly the way the formula was done was based on miles of roads. Feasible, I guess, I don't know.
I don't think so.
Assess value.
Yeah.
Just like the workman's penthouse assess value.
So, um, I did send Fred and Brian tonight with the email I sent to you guys. I mean, the issue is, that I have is, Portland County is already taxing the residents of Portland County at, at, in an extreme rate. We're in the top five most taxed per capita counties in the state. That's insane, so it's no lack of income coming in to the county. This is a service, if it's, they're talking about the jail, this is a service that they're supposed to provide. It's like us saying that we're gonna flip around and charge them money for our rec program or something like that. They, you know, they need to either cut their spending or raise their taxes to pay for what they're supposed to provide, not push it down to us. So I made it clear, um, I did hear back from, uh, from both Kelly and Linda. Kelly said she's been out of loop on it. Linda was against, um, altering it and had heard that they were possibly gonna keep it the same. Remains to be seen. I don't trust the legislature any farther than. I don't trust the legislature any farther than I can throw them, and, uh, so I hope that they don't just, you know, it's a, just be, it's just a cowardly way of increasing taxes, you know, because it forces us to either cut services or raise taxes when they do that. So.
And every other village and town.
And every other village and town and the city, yes.
And even the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, everybody.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's a sign of incompetence on their part if that's what they're gonna do. So, that's the update. It's not, you know, exactly, happy news, um, the meeting is tomorrow night, you guys can come, it's at the Legislative Office Building.
You can't do anything except watch.
Yeah, and it is at, I think it's at six-thirty. Six-thirty in the Legislative Chambers.
I guess I'd just like to know how Kelly and.
Well, they won't be voting tomorrow night.
Oh, they are? And they won't?
This is just, this is just the municipalities interfacing with the legislature.
Oh, that ought to be fun.
It's gonna be a barn burner. When they vote, I don't know.
Can I get a video of that?
I'm sure you'd be.
I know, that's gonna be hilarious.
Yeah, because you know, these, you think I'm fired up about it, some of these other town supervisors are even more fired up about it, so, yeah. It's just, it's just a terrible move by the county. All right, next item. We are at the.
We kinda talked about it already, but just revisit it, the vacant housing.
Vacant housing, so I think you had the office implementation, which was that you or your designee to send the letters to the houses on the list, um, with the copy of the rules.
We'll, we'll highlight the, uh, the pertinent parts of the, of the village ordinance, that way they don't have to read through the whole thing, they can just go through the highlighted parts, and it pretty lays, it lays out fairly clearly what they have to do, and if they have questions, they can always contact us.
Do you have a gist of a letter, of the text of the letter that you wanna send?
We can gin something up within the next forty-eight hours.
And you don't care? Thank you very much. Resolution for climate smart communities, so, this is sort of the next step, you know, we did the electric car charging station, and we got a twenty-five-hundred dollar grant back for that, which just about covered the, I mean, not quite covered what we, you know, had to pay to have it installed and what we paid, but since it was an eight-thousand-dollar unit and we got it for fifteen-hundred dollars, right, I, I think that was what I saw in the bill.
Do we know how many people have been using it?
I haven't been looking, no.
I haven't seen anybody park there in quite some time.
It's gonna change, I mean, you know.
Do we need to put a sign out in the road?
We do need to do some better signage.
I think there, there are a few people who know about it for, when concerts go on to the center, they'll stop over, charge for an hour or two.
I'm just wondering if they need a sign or something.
Yeah, we, we do.
Or just attach it to your sign, a little, little elbow that says electric charging station with a little arrow.
And I think we probably need to tweak the cost, the, yeah, what we're charging.
It's a buck or something, isn't it?
Yeah, it is only like a buck, but, you know, if someone's only there for forty-five minutes, probably not really, I don't know, I mean, I'd pay a buck for it still.
If they're there for forty-five minutes, that, the, the charge rate they're getting, they're probably not getting much out of it anyway.